Okay, it's four o'clock and we'll go ahead and get the October 12, 2015 meeting of the City Commission underway and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, at this time we'll ask that all who are able to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance and in a moment of silence, and I understand the Royals are up nine-six, so we'll make this a little bit of our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no awards and proclamations today and we'll move to Citizens Forum. It's just an opportunity for citizens to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda and we just ask that you give your name, address, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. I just wanted to ask the status of some of the Salina 2020 downtown planning. In a September 12 article by Tim Unruh, an October 15 deadline was mentioned as being key for the Star Bond applications. And since I went to the open house, and it's mentioned in the September 12 article, plans to turn Santa Fe perhaps from four lanes down to three lanes, possibly two lanes with medians. And I'm kind of wondering if this September 12 article makes it sound like that's one of the key decisions that has to be made right off or first thing. And I'm wondering the status of all of that. It seems very odd to me that with the building of a new hotel downtown and a fieldhouse where you're increasing traffic, that you would purposely try to reduce traffic volume in, on an arterial where you have the hospital and essentially two fire stations.
Okay. Well, thank you for the question. Thank you for being at the workshop. Two questions I heard there, Mr. Gage, and one of them has to do with the deadline for a Star Bonds application. And then the other one was probably more for a Dan Stack question on, because I think it deals more with traffic volume.
Yeah, I think I can hit both and Dan can fill in if I miss something. On the first question, the, what they were doing with bringing the downtown and the community together in the downtown was to get that input and just kind of come up with ideas and concepts. Anything that is formally submitted to the state will have to be approved by the governing body, so it'll come back here. So, there'll be full disclosure and all that. And that's, and quite honestly, that won't be mid-October. What happens is, is the, the city has a year from the time that the district was formed and the state likes to look at that in quarters. So, there's a thought of what information to give the state early, about halfway through, so we can get some feedback from them. But there's a lot of work that has to be done and the final stuff will come back here, so you don't have to worry about that. With regards to the street, I think the downtown folks have talked about three lanes for a long time. In a lot of cities, some of which have downtowns that have higher traffic volumes than ours, Fort Collins is one that comes to mind, there's been a trend in the last few years to try to put more emphasis on a sense of place rather than carry the volumes. And what that means is, is that because downtowns have such a grid network of streets, there's a lot of ways to get to places without having to go down, say, Santa Fe. And so what they want to do is really try to bring that, the buildings and the streets get closer together, create more of a pedestrian-friendly environment versus a vehicular environment. And I think that's coming into the planning concepts, but as I mentioned, that'll be fully evaluated by staff and the governing body and the public before it be submitted formally. So, it's just ideas and thoughts and visions and concepts right now.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, too, for all the letters to the editor. You're always so well-informed. I always enjoy them.
Judy Larson, 715 North Ninth. Today I was sitting out front of City-County waiting for a bus and, you know, there's two sets of benches on the east and on the west, and then there's yellow tape that says this is a no-smoking area. However, the no-smoking area does not include the benches. And I would like to request that one of the tapes, preferably on the west side, get moved behind the bench, so that the bench is a no-smoking area. And then the other benches, they could smoke there, the people that smoke. I was seated on the bench with a woman who was smoking one of those electronic cigarettes that looks like a hash pipe, actually. And, and my lungs tightened up. And so I'm wondering if we couldn't just move that no-smoking tape behind the bench, leaving the west-side bench free for smokers and the east-side benches for non-smokers. Thank you.
Judy, real quick, what's the location of that bench?
Right outside, right outside City-County.
Okay, ours here, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Perhaps Commissioner Hardy or Vice Mayor Crawford, who are on the Building Authority Board, can take a look at that and see. Also, I'm quite certain nobody up here knows what a hash pipe looks like, so whatever that was.
If I could go one question further, probably when the ordinance was enacted, we didn't have the bus service.
Right.
Is it an easy thing to do to include retroactively the bus stops as protected sites? Because it is a place where the public gathers, a small amount of it at one time, obviously.
Yeah, I, I, I'll have Greg nod if I'm headed the wrong direction, but typically on regulations like that, we're dealing with both a local ordinance and we're dealing with a state law as well. And typically, for example, local ordinance can be more restrictive and I would, I would think, I think we'll check, but I would think that also the authority of, our Building Authority Board, the board that governs the building, could also be more, they could also pass a requirement that's more restrictive. So, as long as we're not less restrictive, we're usually in pretty good shape that way. Look at Greg and make sure he curs.
I think that's certainly a generally true statement. The only thing I would note, the current ordinance does not address any outdoor areas presently. The controls are limited to indoors, as I recall.
Yeah, the only thing on outdoors is a distance from the main entrances, is it ten feet?
There is a distance.
You can't remember the distance.
There is a distance from the doorways that presumably keep, limit the intrusion of smoke from outdoors into the indoors. So, that was simply one distinction, that when you mentioned how, just how readily it could be done, I think it could certainly be considered, it would be a rather significant step from a policy standpoint in going into outdoor areas.
And are the school football, football fields are no smoking, I don't know if that's a separate USD policy that's separate from?
Yes. I think, yeah, I think it would be, and that kind of brings back the question to this one, is as long as near a doorway or on the property, the, what the Building Authority would do wouldn't be less restrictive than what state law would require. I'm presuming, Greg, they would have the ability, I think enforceability is a question, but generally speaking, they would have the ability to have a more stricter rule for the property.
That's correct.
So, that's why it'd be a Building Authority question. Wouldn't be a City Ordinance question. That would, you'd have, you'd be looking at a lot of other impacts to the City Ordinance. Clearly, I don't know if it's easy, but fairly clear Building Authority question.
Well, I was thinking about all the other bus stops in town.
That would be, well, that'd be much more difficult, I think, in the sense that it goes back to what Greg's talking about. We have seen cities across the country start to try to regulate outdoor areas, and I can't speak to cases or anything like that. Typically, it goes back, the basis of the authority goes back to health-related impacts of secondhand smoke, which from what we've seen so far are less proven in an outdoor, open-air environment than they are in an indoor or somewhat of a confined space environment. So, that was a question raised by a private party some time ago as it related to a right-of-way area and I think, and there may be some work left that we could do on it, but I think we felt that that was going to be, that would be difficult. Because then it starts to raise the question of, well, if you can apply that in an open area to property controlled by the city, right-of-way between a actual road and, and that property, that invisible property line, could you pick and choose where or would you have to apply it to all of that area? It would raise that type of question as well. So, I mean, we could look at, that would be a pretty intensive research-type question, so that may be something as a governing body. Beyond the request today, if you wanted us to look at, I think that would take a while. We could do that, but you'd be looking at a pretty significant piece of research and it would lead up to a potential amendment to the code. But with regard to the question today, I think that's probably easier dealt with from the Building Authority. So, you can contemplate that and let us know. But we'll, unless you have any reason you wouldn't want us to, we'll work with the Building Authority to try to address today's question and come back if you want us to address the bigger question.
Might be able to say at staff time, I could probably ask Tobacco-Free Cancer or one of the other organizations if anything else in the state or the country would serve as a precedent. And the work may already have been done. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4374, requesting the vacation of a 10-foot north-south utility easement running between lots 15 and 16, Block 1 of the Quail Meadows Estates Edition, 5.1A, First Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10808.
Okay. The public hearing is open and we'll get a report from staff. Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a vacation petition that was filed by Gary Hecker, who operates or does business as Legacy Builders. And the location is the outside loop of Jack Circle, which is located in the Quail Meadows Estates subdivision. And the area is substantially built out, but there are two platted lots, lots 15 and 16, in the northwest corner of Jack Circle, right here, that are still vacant. And Mr. Hecker has purchased these lots. He first expressed interest in possibly trying to split these to create three lots out of two, and as he laid his plans out, it was determined that there was a 10-foot utility easement that ran along the common lot line of these lots. So, I think we, we have a little more detail on that, John, that we could show as far as the location of the easement, but it basically runs adjacent to those lots. The original purpose of the easement was to provide a route for electric conduit to get from the rear utility lines out to a street light on Jack Circle. And so what you see on the screen there is, is Mr. Hecker's desired lot split, and based on this plan, this easement is right in the middle of that lot. But what we have is an administrative lot split process, and you can take a platted lot and split it one time without having to replat that, but those splits are reviewed to make sure that the lots are actually wide enough to do something with, or you're not creating something that's landlocked and doesn't have street or utility access. And in reviewing the utility easement vacation request, we determined that West Star has come down this easement with a conduit and then come over on the right-of-way and is serving this pole like that, so this easement is not serving its original intended purpose, so there's no easement that needs to be retained there. The, what I also wanted to share was that I have reviewed this lot split and that these three lots are too narrow to be buildable. They're substantially narrower than the other lots in Quail Meadows Estates and don't meet our minimum zoning requirements. So, that would be Mr. Hecker's choice, whether he wanted to later apply for lot width variances to try to carry out this plan, but that would have to be addressed through the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, the portion of easement in question no longer serves a public purpose, so there's certainly no reason not to proceed with vacating it at this time. Just wanted to make clear that his original motivation for wanting to vacate it may not be able to be carried out. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you might have about this request.
Okay, thank you. Questions from staff?
If the lots were not divided, would the easement fall between the two lots, then?
Yeah, the, the platted lot line runs right down the middle of that yellow strip and the easement's only 10 feet wide, five feet per side, and we have a minimum setback of seven and a half feet. So, if you had one house here on this lot and one house here on this lot, the easement really wouldn't come into play other than the fact that it's there and is a potential obstacle for the future. But the reason that he filed the petition was that it was running right through a projected third lot that does not exist and may not ever exist. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Andrews, I don't, representative of the applicant here, or no?
I don't see Mr. Hecker here, but there is, we have sent this out and got confirmation from West Star, they're not using this easement, so there's not any reason for it to remain. But Mr. Hecker's primary motivation to get rid of it was based on this layout, and I'm not sure that layout will ever come about, but nonetheless, there's no reason to retain the easement because there's nothing in it.
Okay, that was going to be my question, is that there's really nothing there, so. And I think it's safe to say, as you said, it was platted that way, so the easement was placed there because it was on the property line and not the property line put there because it was a good place for the easement. So, okay. All right, is there any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing and bring the item back and entertain a motion.
I move that we approve on First Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10808. Second.
Okay, a motion to second to approve on First Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10808. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0.
Item 5.2, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4375, requesting the vacation of the west 88 feet of a 20-foot-wide utility easement located on the north 20 feet of Lot 17, Block 12 of the Pacific Edition. Item 5.2A, First Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10807.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at this time and receive a staff report again from Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This particular easement in question is holding up both the issuance of a building permit and the finalizing of financing for Phase 2 of the Heritage at Hawthorne Village Apartments. And the plating in this area dates back to 1886, and much of the easement and alley work that was done, all ties back to the original Hawthorne School. And what we've been able to recreate is that there were a number of actions taken in 2006 and 2007 to try to help facilitate the sale and redevelopment of the original Hawthorne School building. And then what occurred was that in, in 2012, the Hawthorne School was demolished and the conduit that AT&amp;T was using that connected to the school building was abandoned. However, it left behind one 88-foot segment of easement, and that, a number of individuals reviewed those plans and did not detect that easement was still there, but the title company and the financiers of the project said that they weren't going to release the financing until this easement was eliminated. So, what we had was historically, there was an alley that went all the way across this site from Ninth Street to Tenth Street, and in 2007, that alley was vacated, but AT&amp;T had a cable that ran in here over to the school building, and they asked that an easement be retained, and so it was retained. And so everybody reviewing the plans saw the notation of the alley being vacated, but did not catch the 88-foot segment of easement that still remains. So, we have contacted all the local utilities and AT&amp;T, and they were the only ones who had anything in there. They're no longer using the easement. There are no franchise or public utilities using that easement, and there are no objections to eliminating that. So, our recommendation would be to approve the petition and to approve the ordinance ordering the vacation of that easement on First Reading. And so you can see that this is Tenth Street here and Grand down here. This is the third building, which would have 16 apartment units, and the way that the easement covers the west 88 feet of that location, the building would be over the top of that. And so, once this is formally vacated, then the financiers will release the funding for Phase 2 and we can release the permit for Phase 2.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
We do have Jeff Gillum, the project architect, here, who has helped us with this, put this petition together, but with his help, we determined that in 2007, there was an easement retained and the fiber optic cable was abandoned, but not the easement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicants consultant? Okay, we'll open it for public comment at this time, if anybody wishes to comment on this item. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will close the public hearing and bring the item back for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, move approval on First Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10807, vacating the west 88 feet of a 20-foot-wide utility easement located on the north 20 feet of Lot 17, Block 12 of the Pacific Edition.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve on First Reading, Ordinance Number 15-10807. Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Before we move into administrative business, I'd like to welcome all of our normal watchers. We understand the Royals just won, nine to six.
Nine to six.
So, all right Royals, but welcome everyone back. Sure no one was watching the first part of the meeting. Okay, we'll move on to administration.
Consent agenda.
Oh, we have consent agenda.
Yes, we.
Boy, I'm all excited about the Royals. When? What do we have, the minutes? Okay, we will move to the consent agenda, then.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of October 5, 2015.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I move we approve consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Now we'll move to administration.
Item 7.1, authorize an agreement with PB Hoydale Company Incorporated to replace the fuel dispenser pumps and spill bucket at the city's fuel site.
All right, great. Mr. Toys with the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this item is for an agreement to replace the fuel pumps and spill bucket at the city's fuel site on Elm Street. This site services both city and county vehicles. The system is operated by a software program called Fuel Master that runs out of the General Services Administration Building and the central garage. These pumps are, if they were, if you were to approve this, would be about 23 and a half years old at the time of replacement. Industry typically replaces these within 15 years. I would contribute that to the maintenance and repair that our central garage staff has provided to this site over the past two decades. When we originally proposed this for the 2014 budget, we received a quote that was estimated at $45,000. We looked for ways, staff looked for ways to see how we could reduce the, the cost to the city for this project. And because he would, the contractor, whoever were, were to win this, would have to subcontract all the concrete work. We have streets crews that are capable of doing that work. We felt that was a logical choice. We removed that from the project, and with all projects that we do that involve electrical, we have the, a city contracted master electrician come to the site to ensure that the entire fuel site is up to the current city code, so the city takes on that responsibility. And then, anything else that is not included in the contractor's responsibilities. We wanted to make it so that the contractor simply had to come in and remove the pumps and replace them with like items. We held a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Out of the five potential bidders, between here and Kansas City, three of them attended the meeting, and one of the companies submitted all of the requirements for a bid. When we removed the concrete work and the other things that the city would take responsibility for, we estimated the cost was going to be around $30,000, and this bid, in fact, is under $25,000. We do have sufficient funds in the 2015 sales tax fund for this project, and I stand for your questions.
Questions for staff?
How much money does the city save in the cost of gasoline, say, per gallon by doing this?
I don't have that figure with me. I will tell you that we looked at the price that we pay for fuel extensively, compared it not only to the commercial market, but to, to other options, other ways of purchasing fuel that we could. The only thing that we were able to find where we could adjust our system to save additional money was rather than ordering, we, we used to order fuel on a two-week cycle, and now we only order fuel when we are capable of receiving a full truckload. And because he brings a full truckload, the delivery costs are cheaper than putting it on a straight schedule. We cannot find a cheaper option than the way we buy fuel. And, and we seriously tried. I don't have the figure for you off the top of my head.
Yeah, I just, not that we can't find a cheaper way, I just was curious about what the market, how the market compares with the cost that we incur.
Commissioner, one, one of the bigger margins that we have is, is, and I believe there's an excise tax, fuel, excise fuel tax that we don't have to pay. I'm not sure if there's any other taxes. I believe there may be, and again, without looking those up, I couldn't tell you exactly, but there's where some significant marginal savings occurs by buying it directly versus buying it at retail. It's probably the biggest area of savings. In addition, probably, I agree with Jim, there's got to be some savings that we, I know we have by buying it in bulk in the way that we do, but the taxes are a pretty big savings for us. The biggest reason really for having a central fuel facility, though, is to ensure that if you have a, it's really, day-to-day, it's sort of a convenience factor, but really outside of that, when you have a situation, could be an ice storm or a situation which fuel could be low throughout the community, if we plan ahead and make sure our tanks are filled as they should be, and as much as anticipation of weather and things like that as we can, then we're assured to have fuel available for our needs and not at some point possibly have to compete with others and find that we don't have it, and then we can't go out and, and send a, you know, a, oh, maybe an ambulance out or a dump truck that needs to go out or whatever it is. So, there's a, there's some benefit to that as well.
And then, what, was there, is there any much significance in the warranties that were offered on these, on the two that provided a warranty?
There were no difference. In fact, the, the, the way that the specifications were read, because these pumps lasted 23 years, and during the pre-bid meeting, we had a fairly lengthy discussion with all of the vendors, and we really felt that this particular pump, or at least the style of pump and the commercial grade and the corrosion resistance and everything that it provides, was really the perfect fit for this city and the weather conditions that we have. But regardless of whether they were the exact same pump, gas boy or not, those that met the specs, the warranties were all the same.
Okay, great. Okay, any more questions? Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, thank you, Jim. We'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, move to authorize an agreement with PB Hoydale Company Incorporated to replace the fuel dispenser pumps and spill bucket at the city's fuel site.
Second.
Okay. Do you want a list of amounts in there, or do you want to?
For... For, I'm sorry, they are at the bottom. Thank you. The fuel dispenser pumps an amount of $22,732.60, and the diesel spill bucket in the amount of $1,863.85, for a total of $24,596.45. Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second to authorize an agreement with PB Hoydale Company Incorporated to replace the fuel dispenser pumps in the amount of $22,732.60, and the diesel spill bucket in the amount of $1,863.85 at the city's fuel site, for a total of $24,596.45. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. I think we just broke a record, folks. 30 minutes.
Yes.
But we have, but we have other business, so. We just, okay, I spoke too soon. Anybody have anything for other business? Anybody have a report from Topeka?
Lot of good stuff going on around this state. You know, the, the one thing that I went, went to a right-of-way seminar this morning, and it's mostly talking about DAS antennas, the small cell antennas, and also internet. And I found out that the city of Pittsburgh has a provider that's willing to put in high-speed internet for residential customers, which I thought was kind of interesting. That's the, the Google kind of internet, and so I was thinking, oh, gosh, maybe we ought to look into that. So, that, and I'm putting in that in my list of things to do.
Mayor, one thing that I, I thought was interesting is that, you know, with, campaign season comes around far too often, every couple of years, and so, when that happens, we see a lot of negativity, because unfortunately, when people want to compare themselves to folks running against them, a lot of times, it gets negative, and, and so, sometimes it puts people in negative moods. But, we had a really good presentation this morning on hope, and the impact of hope to productivity, private, public, all that, and I thought that was, it was very good. And it's, it's really, I mean, the theme of it is, is, you know, hope and being positive makes, it truly does make a difference, and I thought that was real good.
Bought the book.
Yeah, there we go, bought the book.
Well, thank you to staff, thanks to staff and commissioners that gave up their weekend and went to that. I think it's always helpful to get together with peers and, and kind of learn what everybody else is doing, and, and, so, thanks for, thanks for doing that.
I also, I might talk about one that I went to this morning on just the ability of commissioners to get along after they are elected, and how to build a team. And I, and I think this commission has done a really good job of that, so, but it's very interesting.
One of my favorite parts was the, the social function last night, but Ashley was doing pianos, but I did go to the talk on, on containment of healthcare expenditures, and it's just kind of mind-boggling, you know, when you look at the total amounts, you know, and that just us, but any city or agency has to spend, governmental or private, and the, you know, the ways you can rein the cost, and the guy, the speaker, shouldn't call him the guy, made an analogy that reining in health costs is, is like the Royals winning a game. No home runs, no grand slams, just, you know, singles, stolen bases, sacrifices, it's penny here, penny there, nickel here, nickel there. But, but a lot of food for thought for, for things that we can look at to try to, if not reduce costs, keep them from rising. The other thing you realize when you go to some, especially the state meetings, you realize how well we do many things already, that we're, we're the ones, we're the model that a lot of cities try to model after.
I agree. Well, that's, that's great. I, and, and obviously, we thank League of Kansas municipalities for all the great stuff they do to put events like this together, and are just a great resource. I know I use them quite frequently, and, and appreciate being able to use those, but to speak a little bit to what you had said, Commissioner Hardy, and that is, is that I was at the Sven Hellings Fest, 75th anniversary. They had a brunch and a parade, and I would highly recommend, when you get the invitation next year, Vice Mayor, to go. Met with a lot of local mayors, and, and they were all very complimentary about, and they all know what we're doing downtown, and are very excited along with us with what we're doing there, but also had kind words from Senator Moran, he was there, and the, and the Attorney General was there, and it's really a, a big deal, so I would encourage you to, to do it, and it's a lot of fun. They, they throw a great parade down there as well. And then, was able to, last night, be with the, I think you remember, the National President of the VFW Auxiliary was in town and had dinner with them last night, and was real nice to be with them.
Did they have to turn out?
They had, there were about 30 or 40 people turned, turned out to that, yeah, but it was very, they always do a nice job. And then, I just want to give, just a, I admire our Parks and Recreation staff, and they worked really hard on Saturday to put together the Steve Hawley Playground. And I'll share just one story, because it was, it was the highlight of the day. I got there, obviously, afternoon, because I was down in Lindesburg, but they had, they had all been working there all day, and little kid rides up on his bicycle, and if you get a chance, go out there and look, because it's a Steve Hawley Playground, and it's a Space Shuttle theme of the play equipment, so there's rocket ships and all these neat little things out there, and a little kid, probably about eight years old, rides up on his bicycle, and he looks up there, and he goes, "Wow." It's kind of cool. His eyes just got big, "Wow." That's all he said, and turned around, pedaled off, and left, so he probably snuck in under the fencing and was playing in there last night when we left. But, if you get a chance, drive by there and look at it, I, I understand it'll probably be finished sometime this week, but they did a great job, Dion and Steve Hardisty, and Bob Ash, and Steve Blue, and I think Tom Gates, and a guy, Rick, that was out there, and Sue Klein's son, who came from Kansas City, works with the play equipment, but the landscape structures people were there, they're supervising and helping out, but it really was, it was a lot of fun. And then, of course, KW's 6-0 now, so. It was a busy weekend, but it sounds like everybody had a pretty good time. So, anyway, Carl? Are you gonna, are, do you want to add, or do you want to tell us what we're going to be doing for the next hour and a half?
I don't have anything to add to the weekend, but we'll just keep the meeting moving a little. I'll have to ask Mr. Binkston to advise how much time we're going to need for this executive session. Forty-five?
Forty-five. Make it closer now, if you want to do that, that's fine, you can ask for more time to set you on how realistic you think that would be.
Do you want to just take it to 5:30? That would be.
Fifty minutes.
Fifty minutes.
So, then I will move to recess into executive session for forty, for fifty minutes, to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:30 PM. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to recess into executive session for 50 minutes, and reconvene at 5:30. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have business following?
We do not.
No business following.